Good afternoon. I now call the briefing meeting of Lilly County School District Wednesday, November 7th to order. The time started is 2:04. And our agenda today is light. I trust, but I don't think our conversations will necessarily always be light. Today, we will be going through the legislative platform and getting all of that completed, and so we're ready to roll with that. Next, under Executive Services, we will be reviewing the Student Progression Plan along with the Plan for Student Enrollment for the upcoming school year 2019 through 2020. Under Operations, we will have our Capitol Project update. And there was one change of order memo that was already included within your agenda. Is there anything under good of the order at this time? Okay. And then we're ready to move on. So let's go right on into our legislative platforms. Mr. Dodeck.
Good afternoon, Board members. As you know, we met about 15 days ago in a workshop and determined that you all would continue the conversation today regarding the Board's legislative priorities for 2019. Ms. Green is here today, also joining us, to assist us in that endeavor. I did provide some backup material regarding the two additional priorities you identified at the last meeting regarding school resource officers and the High Growth Capital Outlay Grant. Mr. Moore did spend considerable time developing the documents regarding that proposal as backup. Some of that language would have to change after the successful passage of the referendum yesterday, which I say with glee.
Yes.
And, but otherwise, we're here to listen. I will say, the School Resource Officer proposal, Dr. McCullers, who's always very much on top of things, which I appreciate, indicated if the Board was willing to include money for charter schools in that proposal, if you were going to put that forward. The current amount is $11.6 million to pay for SROs in all of our schools. Obviously, that number would have to increase if we included charter schools. And Mr. Blerton, who I don't see, could possibly provide us with that figure if that's the way the Board wanted to go. So otherwise, I'll open it up. I don't know if Ms. Green wants to add anything at this point, but.
Okay. Board members and Ms. Green.
Good afternoon, everyone. So, I think I've got that. Greg, we're with you today. Congratulations on a good day yesterday and a bad day yesterday, but a good day yesterday, you know, we always have our mixes on those days when those things happen. But obviously, the community of Lee County has spoken in regards to the half cent, which I know everyone worked, everyone worked very, very hard on trying to make sure that that happened. That being said, we're ready to move forward now that we have the elections behind us and it's time to start thinking about what we're going to be doing as we move forward. Everyone gets sworn in in Tallahassee. When we, when we're talking about legislators, everyone will be sworn in on the, two days before Thanksgiving, the 20th of November, and organizational will start then. One of the things that's really important about that in regards to some of the things that we are going to be talking about as far as legislative priorities is going to be starting to analyze where leadership is going to land with those committees that are going to have most of, the majority of the impact on issues that we are going to be bringing forward. So that's one of the things that we're watching and looking at our tea leaves with right now to be sure that we stay on top of that and make that happen. Ashley apologizes for not being here today, but she had some issues that she needed to deal with with her children, which I know all of you can respect and understand. But she did take part in the conference call that we had with Mr. Dodeck earlier this week. So we have been briefed on the issues that you had brought forward. I apologize, I was not able to be at your last meeting because my husband and I were celebrating a 40th wedding anniversary, so we were, we were gone for a little while. So I apologize for not being here to be part of that discussion. But I'm here today so that we can talk about this in a little more detail. With that being said, we did have good conversation, I believe it was on Monday, on the four issues that I had, the two that were approved with the general knowledge exam proposal, the Grow Your Own proposal, and then the pending in regards to the, the SRO issue that Mr. Dodeck just brought up, and then also the High Growth Capital Outlay issue. None of those are new issues, needless to say, but those are things that we have been looking at, so we're here today to look at that. I've also had an opportunity to be part of some of the discussions that the consortium had. That has been amended, including, I believe, again, today when Monroe, when Monroe County weighed in with some of their changes they wanted, which all looked fairly minor to me in my first blush, because I looked at that about half an hour ago when it popped up on my email. So I have been looking at that, too, and being sure that, that we continue to reach out to them to at least continue to be part of that dialogue, even though what we really need to talk about today is what's most important to each and every one of you here in Lee County. That being said, I'm certainly open to the discussion.
Okay. Board members, conversation. Yes, Ms. Patrica.
I'd like to just sort of springboard off of where we left off with our workshop, which is a meeting with our delegation and our foundation and our committees here as a workshop, followed by continued effort by this Board to get out and educate the public. What I envision is, sorry, Lauren, no break for you. What I envision is altering the Change for Change presentation and then going out to the same groups that we went to with the Change for Change presentation and educating the public on education funding in the state of Florida, to include the base student allocation, to include the fact that our funding has not kept pace with inflation, and to include the rollback in the RLE. So I would like to see those three items added to our legislative platform, not so that we go to the delegation, we say, change this this year, but so that we discuss it with them. And more importantly, as part of our legislative platform, we can inform the public, educate the public, and continue to grow this base of support that was evidenced by yesterday's vote.
Might I comment in that regard? Mr. Dodeck and I did talk about that, too, when we, when we had our conversation on Monday, and I applaud you for that effort. I think that it's very important, and certainly became even more important as we saw the last 24 hours. I know that the hard work that went into that, having been part of this community for 30-plus years and having seen a lot of the presentations and been part of some of those audiences in that regard, I think that that is really a win-win. I think the community understood better because of that, that undertaking, and I think that the reason that they did understand better was because those presentations were actually reaching out to them and, and they were, they were getting them not just from one place, they were getting them from several places. So I think that when we start looking at even, you know, Rotary and Kiwanis and Chamber and, and all of those groups, I think that even though there's some overlay there, that's good, because sometimes we have to hear things more than once. So I completely applaud that and support that, and think it's a really great idea to put that to the platform.
Mr. Toyver.
Thank you, ma'am chair. And I also think, you know, this, the, the presentation was primarily focused on the Capitol side. I think it's incumbent on us to not only keep that as we, as we have it, but to add in the second component on the operating side, the balance between the two, the restrictions we have between the two, how we, you know, how we have to keep our, the funds where they are, and then, and that gives us the opportunity to, we talk about the rollback, reads into the rollback rate and the funding formula, because, you know, most of our taxpayers don't believe or understand or even know how that formula is established. And they're thinking that it's something we set, and they also don't realize how we contribute to everybody above the I-4 corridor. Those are type of informational things that our, our tax base needs to understand where that money, how it's being spent, and where it's, where it's going and where it's coming from.
Any other Board members have a comment?
Actually, I was going to ask Ms. Patrica, you said three things. Would you just state them again?
Base student allocation.
Yep.
Rollback in the RLE.
Yeah.
And the fact that our funding has not kept pace with the rate of inflation.
Oh, oh, inflation, thank you.
So a graph showing where.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
Can I, can I add one other thing? And this, I think, is more of a request for Dr. Atkins and maybe Dr. Carlin. Can we somehow ensure that SAC meetings are not held on the same nights as board meetings? Because if we're going to go give these presentations to SACs, it can't be on the same night as board meetings. And frequently, I find myself having to forego a SAC meeting because it's on the same night as a board meeting. So can, can we somehow make that push, please, and thank you?
I did mention that to, to Dr. Carlin, so.
Yes, Ms. Gocel, Dr. Gocel.
I think a compelling piece of that is the comparison across our country with other states in terms of how well we're funded. And also then, also some discussion about the demographics here. We certainly emphasized that when we talked about 40% of our students coming from non-English speaking homes, et cetera. I think that first part of that presentation is really critical. And the one part that I didn't see in there was that 70-plus percent, I think, of our students are on free and reduced lunch, which emphasizes another challenge to, poverty is insidious, and it affects the schools and learning probably the most of anything, so.
Yeah, I think we know the, the questions that come up most frequently, and I think that we can craft the message to address those questions, like, why do we have student assignment? Like, why don't you just take advantage of increases in property value like the county does, like the municipalities do? You know, we can answer those questions because they've come up over and over and over again.
And I also see this as an opportunity, you know, we clearly didn't win over everybody to include some business leaders. And I see this as an opportunity tomorrow to knock on their door or call them and say, hey, can we sit down and have a conversation? I'm not asking you for anything, I'm not asking for your support on anything. I just want you to understand and get engaged, and I see this as a perfect opportunity to do that.
If I may, Ms. Pat, oh, Dr. Atkins.
Just something going back to one of the things that were, was mentioned relative to our operations budget. You know, one of the things that we need to focus on is, of course, teacher salaries and teacher compensation. And we had the report from the finance officers that I may have sent, I can't remember if I sent it to you or not, to be honest with you. But if you look at that, in terms of real per pupil revenue change from 2009 to 1415, the, what a teacher is able to purchase in terms of purchasing power relative to inflation has actually decreased by 10%. Actually, that's per pupil spending. Teachers have, spending power has decreased 5.5%. So what that means is the per pupil spending is down 10% in what its purchasing power was relative to what it was back in FY10. And the teacher salary has not kept pace either, and so that's 5%, 5.5% less than what it was back during that same period of time. And this is a study that was done in, released in June of 2018 from the Educational Resource Strategies, and it was cited by the Florida Finance Officers' report, which was a recommendation, one of the recommendations that they have is for, to increase teacher salaries. That's a report that's provided to the Commissioner of Education. So, you know, I think that that's information that a lot of people don't have out there, that our per pupil spending, you know, because we hear about record, but educational budgets, but we forget that we also have record educational, or student population, you know, in terms of, you have more students, so of course, it commands a larger portion of the budget. And of course, you know, you have more Floridians, so you're going to have more taxes coming in. So money's going to go up.
And in, in that regard, I'm very happy for our neighbors to the north, but we find ourselves in a very, very difficult position with teachers now, because both our neighbors to the north and our neighbors to the south have a 1.0 mil for operating. And so our ability to compete is going to be severely hampered. So I agree with you, education regarding teacher salaries is essential in what we do here.
Ms. Patrica, I'd like to, Mr. Toyver, do you have a comment?
No, no, I'm good.
I just want to commend you on, on, on a couple of facts. But one of the things that I really appreciate was the fact that you mentioned the discussion of, of workshops with our delegation and the foundation, working together and having those. That's something that has been a desire of my heart in these four years, and having it take place, for various reasons, that did not happen. I appreciate the fact that you are being proactive and looking at ways to see that we make that happen. I really truly believe that once that happens and there becomes a habit, then it will easily transform regardless who is, of who is sitting on the Board. So thank you for taking that initiative.
So I guess what myself and probably Ms. Johnson are looking for is some guidance, what to bring back to the Board to approve as far as priorities in addition to the two that have already been approved. We had talked at the workshop about doing that either on the 20th of November or at the first meeting in December, the only meeting in December. And I kind of looked to Ms. Green whether or not that's too far down the road. But I just need to know if the Board is satisfied with these additional two, and I know Ms. Patrica just mentioned some things, that the BSA and the rollback, which seem like priorities, and then the other thing is, I think, graphical, which isn't necessarily a priority, but part of a presentation, I think you're suggesting. So if, if, if you could just clarify that for me, then I think we're good. Anyone?
So I think what you're saying is that we have two adopted priorities.
Yeah.
Those are, those are the initiatives that we've asked our local delegation to carry for us. And then we're going to, then we're going to add three or four additional items. And the question is, you know, really, what is the priority and how are we going to do it with respect to our work with the delegation? So I would see the personal, the School Resource Officer proposal as being as critical as the other two that we've already decided upon, because that's, that's short-term.
Right.
And I am comfortable with the notion of including, if we were to get funding, including funding for charters.
Okay.
That's just my personal opinion. With respect to the other two, I think all we need is a draft for the BSE, the RLE, and the, and the inflation graph, and we're ready to go. I mean, it should be fairly simple statements on BSE, RLE, and then lots of charts, lots of backup information. My goal would be to do it at our next meeting and not wait until December, because we need to, we need to have a plan when we know who the committees are and who we've got to reach out to. So those are my comments.
Ms. Patrican?
Should we add the recommendation of the Finance Committee with regard to teacher pay to that? Didn't they have a specific recommendation with regard to, we don't have to reinvent the wheel?
Well, it says, yeah, increase teacher salaries, and it just goes on to talk about their compensation, but what it's suggestion was specifically was to use the dollars that were for best and brightest, which was an allocation of $233 million, and to redirect that toward increasing teacher pay.
Again, I see this as, is, is our delegation going to run with this this year? Probably not, but we can educate the public.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. So the High Growth Capital Outlay Assistance Grant, I'm sorry.
Well, and I just wanted to also point out, the RLE, it wanted, it said maintaining the current required local effort, you know, add the lower end tax rate, and leverage the increasing statewide property tax rule to generate additional revenue for the purpose. So it was, that was combining those two to increase the revenue stream that would help increase teacher compensation.
Good, then we don't reinvent the wheel, right?
So the High Growth Capital Outlay Grant proposal language, is that something that the Board is not inclined to want to do this year? Is that?
I'm not. I mean, you know, we've, we believe that we've, that local, the local population has made a decision.
Okay.
Moving forward, it's a local decision, so we're not looking to engage the legislature and operate at the state level on this. I just, I don't even think for the long term, it's something we want to get into. I think we need to focus on the operating side.
Really, if you recall, the purpose of, of that suggestion was as a backup plan.
Right, yeah. My, my only concern there is that one of the things that I have said in my presentations to the public is that we will continue to work to restore traditional sources of funding for public education. And if we're not looking to restore capital funding, then from the state, I mean, I would like nothing more than to make the motion from this Board to say, stop collecting the half penny sales tax, because the state has given us the funding we need. And if we don't ask for it, we're never going to get it. So that, that's my only caveat. I, I understand what you guys are saying, I'm not pushing, I'm just, that, that's my only caveat.
A question. Has staff already looked at the impact of what would come back to us regarding property taxes? Should the amendment, had, if the amendments had passed, that did pass last today regarding property taxes? We're going to see, our county commissioners are may see, are definitely going to be, see a reduction, which will then hit us when it comes to SROs and law enforcement, so.
And impact fees.
With impact fees. So there's going to be, there's going to be, there may be a point, we may want to put it on the back burner maybe for this year, but just may, I would suggest to the incoming Board that it may be looked at again next year. Mr. Toyver.
My only, you know, view on this.
My only, you know, view on this is this particular statute, or, you know, or what this initiative is, is to actually take a look at the enabling language in the statute to provide for capital for growth. Isn't that kind of where we're looking at is for the ones that exceed for growth? So to me, I think that's a whole separate issue to our funding needs per se, but the state of Florida in the sense that there's a defect in our statutory language that doesn't provide a mechanism for funding for growth in Florida. That deficiency still not there. They, they have bad language in the state, and nobody's going to address it unless somebody brings it to their attention. So for us, even though it's not prevalent for us as far as the current need, just as Ms. Patrica said, you know, for us to be constitutional officers and do our duty to do it, and then they fix the formula, and then we don't need the money, I mean, could you imagine the, you know, our, our, our people in our community if we'd say, we don't need the tax anymore? I mean, they, that's just like, you know, when I take retainers and I give refunds back, they go, we get money back? I go, yeah, I didn't use it. And they're like, whenever ever happened before? I go, I'm sorry, you know, I can keep it, you know, and so, I mean, that would be something. So if we could, you know, do, work our diligence and just put it as, you know, again, working cooperatively, not as something that we're, you know, a hill we're going to die on, but just to, to point out that fact, to say, look, this funding formula is not mechanically correct, that we can actually have the people that are more applicable in growth in the state of Florida, us and other counties, and work, you know, collaboratively with our, with our delegation to do something to fix deficiencies in language. And I'll defer to Ms. Green because she's been there.
Yes, Ms. Green.
The, a couple of comments in regards to the dialogue that, that the board members are having here. One of the things that I think is important is that this, it's a, it's, not to say such a cliche, but it's a teaching moment, if you will. It is an opportunity, I think, to talk to people about what this impact might be. One of the things Mr. Dodig and Ashley and I talked about on Monday was, do we have any sense of, of other potential high-growth counties that might be also in play here to be able to reach out to them and talk to them? I think that's one of the things that we do need to do. I think that that's a very important thing to do. The other thing we need to keep in mind, however, is that to actually do this type of, it's going to require a bill. This is not an amendment, yes, I know the statutory language is there, et cetera, it's going to require a bill, which means we're going, it's going to require getting someone who's willing to fall on a sword and file this as a bill as a major issue. Not as big an issue in the Senate, as all of you know, but a really big issue in the House trying to get someone to go forward and do that. So what I would say is that at this particular juncture, what I believe I'm hearing some people at least say is that we can use this as a teachable moment, we can use this as something as saying, hey, by the way, this is something that we've recognized because of what we've gone through, the exercise we have gone through, we look out to see what other counties potentially would have the situation where I can then reach out to consequently their, their contracted lobbyist, if you will, and reach out and say, are you, are you guys interested in this too? If we can use this as a piece of a platform to educate as we go forward as opposed to something where we actually are looking for somebody to file a bill right now, because I think it would be very, very hard to get someone to do that, you know?
Right.
Realistic imagination.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that what the board is inclined to want to do?
Yep.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Dodig, thank you, Ms. Green. Is there anything else under the legislative that we need to cover before we move on? Green?
Could you, could you tell me what date your meeting is in December, just so I have that on my calendar?
Tentative, we have a tentative date of December 11.
Yeah, they, they won't be deciding that until next week, yeah.
Then the 20th, you're going to take action, is what I'm hearing you say, because the 20th, we, we'll start, because organizational is that day in Tallahassee, so that will be, it'll probably be up until then before we'll have any real solid clue as to who's going to be, who's going to be on first, so to speak, you know, as far as who's going to actually be in those positions. I would also report to you, just very briefly, is that we have had meetings with a good majority of our delegation, and they've been, I think, very productive meetings specific to the Grow Your Own Teacher Scholarship, which is something that we will have to have someone file because it is a budget request. So we've had very productive meetings with Senators Benacisto and Pasadomo in that regard. We've also had a very productive meeting with Representative Fitzhagen and Representative Donald so far. We will now reach out now, since yesterday's over, and everyone now is feeling a little more secure and not so much in campaign mode, but more in the mode to start to get to work. We'll reach out and make sure that we get around to everyone because we do need to get that started so that we don't find ourselves chasing, chasing it at the very end. The only thing we're really waiting on, of course, and Mr. Dodig has already supplied the format that, that Senator Pasadomo had sent out, we will have new forms come out because we have new leadership coming in, so that's something else that we'll be doing. But, but we are on top of that, just to report back to the board that we're on top of making all of those things happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we're going to move right into Executive Services, Student Progression Plan, and Student Enrollment Plan. Ms. Houchen and Dr. Creel are coming up to share with us. Good afternoon, ladies.
So we're coming before you today because we would like to add a statement to our progression plan. Many times we, you, we get the document ready and bring it to you, and then we have a legislation change. And/or we have students who move to our district, and they need to finish up a credit that we're not offering, that we may, could do so through LEVIRTWO. Sometimes we get funding, which is nice for a grant, and we can add courses to say like career and tech ed that we didn't have the ability before. So we would just like to add a statement that allows us to work with the Florida Course Code Directory that would say the purpose, I'm sorry, that, here we go. The revision of the 2018-19 Student Progression Plan, and then that we, I don't think I put that on there.
It's located on.
Page.
Page 109.
And 268.
And 268. And basically what it's saying is that we would like the approval to add that statement to our student progression plan so that we would be able to approve those courses during the school year. We would, of course, bring those courses to you so that you would be aware of those approvals, but it's, it's basically so that we are able to address the legislation changes and each student that may be coming to us, instead of holding them up and getting or having to redo credits, that we would be able to move forward with that. In addition to the changes that we made with that statement, we had the opportunity to update some dates on pages 116, 118, and 121 that had been omitted in the original plan that we brought forward to you. And so the, the dates were just changing so that it states 2018, 2019. But we wanted to make sure that it was accurate. As we were bringing something forward, we thought that this was an opportunity for us to update that as well.
So will we see this again with, in red that will show the written statement that's proposed?
Yes, the track changes were there, and right now it just shows a red line, but I will have that where it shows red language for you, because it was really hard for me to find it again.
I understand.
So that you can see that. But, I mean, basically, it just gives a super antenna or the designate permission to add courses that are approved by the Florida Course Code Directory to our student progression plan.
All right, perfect.
Looking at your document, if you look on the left-hand side, for example, on the pages 116, 118, and 121, on the left-hand side, there is a small red line that indicates that there was a change that was made. And then on pages 109 and page 268, you will see that there also on the left-hand side of the document is a small red line indicating that an addition was done. The reason that there is not any track changes is because it didn't change language, it's just added language to it.
I don't see, I don't see, we're not seeing the red line, so we may not have the year revised PDF.
All right, I sent Jennifer both, so I sent her one clean and one with track changes, so I'll just make sure you have the track changes.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, now, my question when I reviewed this for today was I.
Didn't see any changes.
I didn't see any changes at all. Nothing, like, and I know the very first page has changed because we're in our, it's 2018-19. Typically, that would be crossed out, and I would see the, you know, and I didn't see any of that, so that was, if we could receive that in the future.
So just to clarify, this is still the 2018-2019, so you wouldn't see.
That wouldn't be a change.
It would not be a change. We are, the only changes, so it's not changing this plan for the following year. This is just an addition to the 18-19.
Exactly. Okay.
Just adds that statement.
Exactly.
As we already were implementing this, we had, in fact, we had a student that was in our LEVIRTWO school, and they were transferring in a course, and we needed to have the opportunity to give that student the ability to continue without them starting over. And that's where we began to think about the legislation and what that may do to change a course. So it tried to be responsive and proactive. We added that statement at the end of the middle school, which is on page the 109, and at the end of high school, it's the very same statement at the end of page 268, and so it doesn't change any dates other than.
Exactly.
A correction that we made on 116, 118, and 121, is that when it was submitted as the 18-19 plan, the dates were still there as 17-18.
Right.
And we wanted, as we were bringing something forward, to get it as complete as possible.
Yeah.
So we will come again and bring the 19-20 plan, but this is our current plan that you have already approved, we're just updating it.
Okay. I think we, yeah. Does that make sense? But I guess what Ms. Patrica was, was saying was if we'd seen what the changes were going to be to it, to correct it.
Sure, yeah.
Because we couldn't figure, I, I was like, Ms. Patrica, I read it.
There's no indication.
And wasn't sure where you were going with it.
So, and I tell you what I'll do is, since the way that it did track changes was just a small red line for us, because I, because I had to go page by page to figure out where it was, we'll just change that language to red for you, so you'll, it'll pop this time.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're a little OCD sometimes. It's good to have you join us.
So I'm very happy to hear that you like track changes because in the Student Enrollment Plan, we had a lot of track changes. The ones that you didn't quite find with the progression plan, I think we had more than enough an hour, so thank you for that.
And as Ms. Ralph is pulling this up, we've got the opportunity to just continue, since this is a briefing, this is almost our last opportunity for us to gather input on our Student Progression Plan, Student Enrollment Plan that we will be bringing forward. And so as we have been to various different groups, whether it's the Advisory Committee on the Student Enrollment Plan, whether it's presenting at DAC, whether presenting at EDAC, there's nothing that's been final, and so today we consider this one other additional opportunity for us to gather feedback prior to us bringing to you a finalized document.
So with that, unfortunately, I'm not seeing the PowerPoint loaded in here.
Okay.
You, you received a copy of the.
We have it on ours.
Yep. So if we could just follow along with what you have, we won't delay any longer, if that's okay?
Sure, sure.
So the first thing I wanted to share with you, again, I do apologize for all the red marks, but we're trying to be proactive in making some changes with the Student Enrollment Plan so that it's easier to read. We're trying to be more proactive to what parents need and what's going to help the community without getting rid of the history. Also, you'll notice on the very front, we're enrolling students to succeed. That is our motto, and that's what we're trying to really be focused on this year. On the second slide, there was a timeline of, we presented the plan to DAC, we presented it to EDAC, and we're bringing it now to you for a briefing. We've shared this with other stakeholders in the district, cabinet members, and with principals, so we're, we're on a roll with this. The next part, though, that we need to be aware of are those important dates for the future. Batch one will begin in January, we actually begin January the 14th, and it runs to March the 1st. It is only seven weeks this year. We're cutting it back two weeks so that we have time to get those students in place before we give out allocations to schools the end of March, because it's best if the schools know how many students they have for the whole process to be successful. We're going to go with the staggered batch again, that was implemented last school year, and it was very successful. We'll do high schools first, followed by middle schools, and if we're lucky, we may not have any incoming kindergarteners to enroll by that time because we're having great success with our kindergarten preregistration. On the next page, it was the first recommendation that the PLC is bringing forward. As a reminder, last year, we brought forward to do middle school arts auditions. We also brought forward for the first time the sibling preference, and again, the no transfers until second semester for our secondary students. All of those have been very well received. With our enrollment plan this year, we're looking at some recommendations to continue to move forward, and the first is our change of our department name. We're no longer student assignment, we are student enrollment. That helps parents to have more of a voice in what they're doing with their child and have the opportunity to help their child choose the correct school. We've also reordered the plan, that's why you saw so many track changes. We're putting the plan in an order that's more reader-friendly because many of our parents are more concerned with, what, what do I need to do and how do I do it? We're keeping the history, but we're moving that towards the back. It will no, we won't get rid of the history, it's always going to be there, but it's more important to many parents now to know, what do I have to do and how do I do it? Because they're busy and they don't have a lot of time. The second thing.
Before you turn that page, can you also mention about the pre-K in regards to those students that are attending pre-K at a particular school?
Sure. This is something that we, we've talked about for many years, and we're really going to try to get this to work this year. We have pre-K students in our schools, but not every elementary school has pre-K. So what we want to first do is let those children that have siblings already in school, we will place those with their sibling, of course, then we'll take the other students and we'll offer them a waiver that they can, their parents can complete if they would like to stay at that school, then we'll review those waivers before we run the lottery in batch one, so that we can try to place those students at that school. The only thing that's a little bit of a time crunch for us is making sure that we have the correct service delivery model for those students because they may want a school that they're currently at, and what their service delivery model is may not be available at that school. So that's going to be some counseling for parents, but we're trying to be proactive in meeting the customers' needs and reaching out to the parents, because once they're, they have that relationship built and that culture of that school, we'd like to not change that. So the next part of the Student Enrollment Plan was called Subzone Attractors. Keep in mind, this plan has been worked on by the PLC since back in April, and we've been working on it constantly. We've shared it with stakeholders, as I said, this is the same presentation we gave to DAC and to EDAC, and we continue to look at what we can do to make our schools better. But after a lot of feedback and a lot of input from other stakeholders, we would like to recommend to the board that we remove this section for the Subzone Attractors while it was put in there, and we wanted to share it with you because we thought it might be a way to move forward. It's probably not the best thing that we need to do at this time. We are working very hard on the proximity plan for our elementary schools. We hope to have that ready for batch in January of 2020, and it'll roll out for the school year of the 2020-21 school year, and that's hard to say, that's a lot of 20s in there. We did want to leave this in because after we got our last feedback, we'd already presented it to you, and we are on a tight timeline because January will be here very soon.
Yes.
On the next part is kindergarten preregistration, again, class of 2032, and this has been absolutely fabulous. We've gotten communication with parents, they've been calm, relaxed, they're very appreciative to be able to do this. It's giving them the opportunity with the rochures of, what does my child really need to do? As of Friday, we had enrolled over 800 new kindergartners coming in, and with our 1,200 pre-K that will get pre-printed applications, that's almost 2,000 of our probably 6,000 students. So we still have until November the 30th, and they come in every day. So we're very excited about that. On the next page, it was just another reminder about kindergarten. And this is my opportunity to give a shout out to our communications department. They did a fabulous job in promoting this, along with all of our principals and you as board members and staff here. But the communications department reached out to the media, they got on social media, they sent messages out, and it's just been fabulous. Also, they're going to work on our student enrollment plan when it's finalized and approved by the board and use priority marketing to make a nice, clean document that we, it will be much easier to read in the future. But really, a lot of thanks to the communications department. The eligibility pool, we're doing two things with the eligibility pool. The first one is the eligibility pool will close after day 10 instead of day 15. That will give our classrooms a shorter amount of time for those students to move around, but it also makes some more stabilization in our classrooms. It will also be about the time that we're doing our counts, 11 and 12-day counts, so that we can make sure we have the right numbers of students that will also provide the opportunity for schools to request any additional supports they need to meet the needs of those students. And with our first, second, and third choice, that is only for our elementary students. And I want to share a little bit of data with you. For our elementary students, this is for students that complete an application to, for school choice for elementary. Last year, we had about 4,900 students that actually completed an application. Of those students, 82% of them got their first choice, which is really good. Their second and third choice, we ended up with 11% of the remaining students got their second or third choice. So altogether, 93% of the 4,900 students got their first, second, or third choice, which when you're looking at the application for elementary right now, when we do the proximity plan, it'll be much better, but they have 15, 16 choices. So if they're getting their first or second choice, it's going to be usually a P1 for each of those three choices. So what we would like to do is if a child gets their first, second, or third choice, they do not get put automatically on the eligibility pool or the waitlist. We will allow anybody fourth choice and down to be put on the pool. That will also enable them to possibly get a better option of getting a moved school. We still have waivers in place and those kind of things for elementary schools, but it's just a reducing of the numbers, so that we have children that get a better chance of getting to move to that environment that they truly want. Employee waivers, we're going to continue with those, but we're going to do them all year. And that is our way of helping the district with a recruitment tool, so Dr. Pruitt, we're there for you. So, because we hire many teachers later on in the school year, not just at the beginning of the year. So we're going to make those available all the time. And then at the end, a couple of things that I wanted to emphasize with you. We are working on the proximity plan. It is moving right along. Hopefully, this week, they're running some tests to get the addresses of students to determine where they're going to be, what the locations are in those numbers. 19 and 20 will continue to work on it throughout the school year. And as I said, hopefully, a year from this January, it will be part of batch. The other part that I want to talk to you about for just a minute is we continue to look at our capacity of schools. Dr. Krill is very, very aware that we have schools that are in need, we have under-selected schools, and we monitor those schools at all times in their enrollment. We've done a lot with that just this week with it. But some people actually don't realize the number of students that enroll. So I asked to pull some data. From October 1 through November 2, one month, we enrolled 1,869 students new to Lee County. One month, new to Lee County. That's not our kindergarteners. Those are students coming from other counties, other states, and other countries. Of that, we had 833 students that withdrew from our district. So we had a net gain of over 1,000 students in one month. When I talk about withdrawals, I don't mean transfer within the district, I mean they left. So 1,000 students in a month. And I know we oftentimes say we increase our enrollment by 2,500 each year, or 1,500, or 1,800. It's growing more right now. So I felt like that was an awareness that maybe you as board members need to be aware of, especially when you were talking about your legislative platform. It's something to always be aware of, because, thank you for the half penny sales tax, because we're going to need it. The last part, student enrollment at lee schools.net. We really have been promoting that as an email for parents to communicate with us, to ask questions, and it works. Parents really like it, they have a phone in their hand, they send off an email, and we alternate days as to who's returning the emails. And it's a great communication tool, and it's providing some great customer service. Dr. Krill?
So one of the things that I'd like to emphasize is, first, the fact that it is truly student enrollment, where we are engaging our students in our classrooms and what we're doing with their learning. Saretta just spoke about capacity within our schools. And one of the things that we are working to ensure is that we do have under-selected schools. And oftentimes, those are the schools that, even up until this last week, we were really filling those seats. But what we are working to do is, as we have students withdraw, open those seats up at those schools instead of waiting for second semester, opening those seats up and not necessarily, and having across the board, open seats at each of our schools, so that as students come into our community, we're not necessarily just placing all students into one school at a time. So that if, for example, a student were to come in and they be in closer proximity to Riverdale High School, but yet their seats are all closed, an example would be, instead of enrolling that student automatically into East Lee, because it may be an under-selected school, that we would have seats across the board that we would be able to enroll that student in, in that school. And that's where that process of looking at the withdrawals and keeping those open seats available and understanding about where is it that we are truly looking at that class size and how we're working to support each of our schools in that manner. So that's something that, it takes a tremendous amount of effort on the part of Dominique and Saretta and the rest of the team, but we believe that that's one of the ways that we can best support our students and their families, as well as our schools.
Board members? Ms. Patrica, and then Ms. Fisher.
So, page seven of the plan itself, the new language that you added, right around the middle of that, second to the last paragraph from the bottom. It says, "The plan's focus on offering parental choice reflects a belief in the educational benefits of diversity and facilitates the district's focus on continuous improvement of student achievement," and it goes on from there. Should we have, should we add a statement in there regarding the benefit of competition that choice brings to our district? Because when I hear people like, like our state delegation, and many of our state representatives, and our new governor, and the Constitutional Revision Commission talk about the value of charter schools and vouchers, it's all about competition. And competition is embedded in our system by virtue of it being a choice system. And I think that's a tremendous benefit, and I think that's something parents should be able to read about when they read about our system. Am I making sense?
What page is that? You were.
Seven, the new language that was added in the second to the last paragraph? It says the, reflects a belief in the educational benefits of diversity. Well, there are also educational benefits to built-in competition in a school district.
So it's not page seven in the plan, but it's page seven in the PDF.
Correct.
Thank you, that's why I had to ask.
Page one in the, is it page one?
I'm sorry, page five, my bad, it's page five.
On the PDF? Or the?
It's page, it's page one.
Page five?
Page 5048 is what I'm looking at.
All right.
We will find the section. We understand the language that you're looking for. And so we will find that and see if there is a way that we can include some type of a language.
It is in the introduction.
Introduction, now I see which page number you're talking about.
At the same time, working to express a competition piece to that as we provide equitable services.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's really going to be massaging that language to make sure that we put it in there. But, but thank you for that suggestion.
I have a couple others too, if I may. This one is on page seven. The first two bullet points, I love, love, love our system of student assignment, enrollment, sorry, my bad, student enrollment. I have always loved it, it's one of the reasons I chose Lee County. But I read the first two bullet points at the top of page seven, and I go, huh? If I read it with the deep understanding I have of our student assignment system, and I don't understand it, that could potentially be an issue for parents looking to move into the district and enroll their students here. Two bullet points.
Where it says the district attempts to accommodate siblings.
It just, they don't make sense to me in conjunction with.
It's number three in the document.
Okay.
So there's a little bit of a lack of clarity there for me. And then finally, on page, and this is just a question I've never understood. Why are P2 preferences not available for high school students?
Say that one more time, please.
Why are P2 preferences not available to high school students?
Really answer that question for you. I know that we, we've had that question come up, and I think it's because of, we have a limited number of high schools and maybe, really not sure. But I will find out the answer to that, and if we can revise that, we could do that.
I'm not looking for a revision, it's just a general question I've always had, and this was the opportunity for me to ask it.
Can't get some historical perspective on that and bring that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I had a question about the preregistration for kindergarten. So those people who are preregistering now are getting to choose their schools at this time? No?
A pre-printed application mailed to them in January, and they will do their school choices at that time. But they're actually bringing in their enrollment form, they're bringing in.
So all the documentation and paperwork is finished that way?
And to quote many parents, after they get it all submitted, they say, so now I can do everything online and I don't have to come back to an office? And we say yes, and they are very happy.
I'm sure they are. So that was.
So thank you for asking that question. This is not to give someone an advantage.
Right.
Overcoming for early registration. It really does provide the opportunity at a shorter wait time. That, that's the advantage, at a shorter wait time for families to come in, bring all of their paperwork that they would need, and to get that established so that we hopefully can pay our attention to those incoming in the later part of the year. But we, it does not give families an advantage over others.
Right. And hopefully, at some point, after parents get used to this, it's going to give us a better number of projected students for the upcoming school year.
Right, that's great. It was a great strategy. And then I just wanted to comment on keeping those seats when kids withdraw, keeping those seats open across the district. I think that, that is going to be so beneficial. So whoever thought of that, thank you for that.
Yes, Ms. Morgan?
Two questions or two comments, along with what Ms. Patrica said. Under proximity preferences, there's the, each choice, the very first paragraph doesn't say it's K-12. That's the assumption, that needs to be clarified. And then the other question I have as I'm going through this is about grandfathering. It's not clear that, to me, that transportation and enrollment are two separate things when it comes to grandfathering. And I think it needs to be stated clearly that transportation is not attached to enrollment for.
Grandfathering.
Thank you. Thank you.
Those are my comments.
I have two more.
Ms. Patrica?
Did I see any mention anywhere, and I may have missed it, of the fact that showing up on the first day of open enrollment does not give you an advantage? I don't recall seeing that in there anywhere, but I feel like that's something that parents really need to know.
We encourage, if it's not in there, I do know that in the letters that go out, it is that the, the actual lottery does not run until the end of open enrollment. And we even underline and bolded the sentence, you do not have to come on day one.
But if I'm, if I'm a parent moving here from upstate New York, for example, and I'm only viewing your online stuff and I'm not getting a letter, that should be bolded and underlined and really. And then the other question is, I have had the opportunity to interact with very young students and their parents, and based on whether they're pre-K or K, I know their graduation year. Is that something worth stressing in this pre-kindergarten? Okay.
It's not just our pre-kindergarten. You may remember that last year, we went all the way through and we had our little cards where we're really trying to emphasize that each class knows that they are the graduation class of. Ms. Fisher has it still. And that's really trying to help send the message that it's not just about finishing a particular grade, but they are a part of a cohort of people that are agreeing that they are going to graduate at this particular year, and that we're doing everything we can to get them there.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, ladies, and to staff, because you really did come up with ways to expedite processes. So thank you. Mr. Borton?
Just so Saretta or Dr. Krill don't have to answer the question that you had as far as P2 to high schools, is because there are fewer schools and students are more spread out throughout the district for the fewer schools. So based on the student population, it didn't make sense to have a five-mile preference or P2 when we first did the program, so that's some of the background.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
A man who served more than one role. Understands that. Thank you. And as Mr. Rickenbacher is moving up, I would like to go ahead and just take a moment. I wanted to at the beginning, but I think that some ladies were trying to catch their breath and relax a little bit. But I would like at this time to congratulate our incoming board members who are in attendance this afternoon. Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Gittens, Ms. Jordan, look forward to it, the roller coaster ride is about ready, is ready to begin. Okay, Mr. Rickenbacher.
Good afternoon.
And that applause was for you as well.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Dugan. This is this month's operation division. I just want you to take notice at the cover page for the report. I forwarded some aerials, the final airplane aerials of the site, and the campus is probably one of the most beautiful campuses I've seen from that perspective, the way everything fits. Our business partners that work with Mark Moreau and myself, MMM, BSSW, and Suffolk Construction. Lee High Senior High School is RG Architects and Kristel Construction. Easton High School, MMM, we've met with Lee County DOT, had a productive meeting. We're moving towards a roundabout, which will be on Griffin Parkway. The proximity, we couldn't provide a traffic signal due to the proximity with the new 82 light at Griffin Road and 82. And the roundabout is a preferred method that Lee DOT is using throughout the county, so that's the program moving forward. We discussed with them sidewalks in and around, we discussed flashing lights, school warning lights during school hours that will be in place, so we had a productive meeting, and that's moving forward. In addition, we met with Lee County Emergency Management to discuss the high school as a potential shelter. Due to recent code changes that came into effect as of January 1, 2018, it's a tornadic and a hurricane increase in wind speeds that could potentially be required. So the initial estimate, when we came to you prior for a basic shelter, was about 750,000. This increase to this ICC 500 code actually would require the high school to go to 200 miles per hour, thickening of the precast panels, the roofing structures, and some additional protection even over and above the impact windows. Now, we are in the process right now, myself and Mark, working with our partners. We have a statement from our structural engineer and also from our building code agency that we incorporate on the project, where they believe that it's 190 mile per hour, and they're validating it with some structural conversations. We're going to be presenting that to the Don Whitehead of the Florida Department of Education, their construction and architectural division, to hopefully get a concurrence. So although it won't be 750, we're hoping we can get them back to the 190, and it won't be the 1.6 either. Okay? Gateway Services Division, that's the utilities division in and around Gateway Village. I had a really productive meeting, really enjoy working with those folks. They came up with a creative solution to use a lift station that is a generator in effect and has an automatic bypass pump. That's what they use in some of the other entities along the Griffin Road and in their district. It actually saved us money by not having to bring an emergency power feeder from the back house of the school. back house of the school all the way to the frontage road. It saved us from having to put in a 30,000 gallon sewage containment tank, which was extremely expensive. So, just by having this meeting, they work with us really well. Um, we're saving money on the front end. Next school presentation is out in the east zone. It's middle school MM, Sunrise Boulevard. Uh, you'll see that on the graphic, I think we spoke about this before. Right now, we're presenting the middle school portion, but we're going to develop the site so that in the following years, if the need arises, we can plop an elementary school on that site as well. Uh, we met with Lee Dot again. Uh, part of the trickiness of this particular site is we have an easement, it's a private roadway. So, we met with Lee Dot and what we're trying to do is develop the roadway for access to the school with the ultimate desire of turning the road over to the county for perpetuity maintenance. So, those talks are ongoing. Uh, we were going to push back the RFQ back into January. Uh, we actually just advertised for architectural services this past weekend. So, that advertisement went out for architects and we're going to push up the construction manager into December as well. Okay. Lee High Senior High School, uh, the bids are out. The, um, actual GMP that's going to be presented to myself and Mr. Murrow for review will be delivered to us on the 15th of November. And not knowing what the December meeting date is, we're hoping it's the 11th, we'll be bringing that total project cost to you folks for approval for both the GMP and the entire total product cost for the school.
Right. It's looking good.
Completes that. And I also have the change order report.
And Scott on that one, you're expecting to literally get started January?
In order for me to have that school open for you, I have to be, we're actually hoping to mobilize with protective fencing over the, uh, winter break, get everything set up uh, so that January 9th construction begins and that keeps us on track to open for August.
That's wonderful.
So, you'll see me panically coming down to the office for signatures. That doesn't look like it's going to go big screen. Um, there we go. Uh, this is the change order report for October 2018. Uh, as you can see, we are starting to get return on unused contingency for the Benita Springs High School project and several of our little products. Uh, this month, we reported back $227,000 of unused contingency for the construction project at Benita High. That's, uh, right now, that's for amendment number one and number two. Uh, the auditor has since come into Lee County and is working with the construction manager for Benita and they've already begun the audit process.
Wonderful.
Are there any questions on the change order report?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And the board members. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, the additional cost of, of construction for hardening these schools, isn't that borne by the county?
Uh, we're in discussions with that. That has been part of the inter-local agreement and that has been the expectations on the last two, uh, shelter buildings that I had built, Island Coast and Harms Marsh Middle. We would assume the same. Uh, right now, myself, Mark and Mr. Dogen and staff are, are looking at documents to ensure that that's the way we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Rickenbacher, forgive me if I didn't catch this, but if you want to give them an update in terms of, uh, you know, when they receive the closeout costs on that project and where we are there, I mean, I know it's being audited at this time as per normal, um, course of, uh, you know, action, but when, when do we expect those numbers to come in so we can report back to the board?
What I would like to do for you, Dr. Atkins, is internally and also with Gulf Point staff, we should be by the end of this week able to have a pretty good idea of the funds for the construction contract itself, to give you an idea. The auditing is probably at least a month away.
Okay.
There's seven amendments and they're working on the first three now.
So, it's just important again to know, you know, for the, for our viewing public that, uh, you know, all these projects receive external auditing at the end of, end of them and, and before we really report out a final figure in terms of total overall costs, we, we have them go through, um, these external audits and so we make sure that those numbers are accurate. So, his number he would give you would be preliminary, um, pending the outcome of that audit. So, about a month, you say?
Correct. And we're, we're still tracking savings as I've reported to you previously between DMP and, and tax. Uh, so I should be able to get you something by the end of this week and it's definitely under the board-approved construction cost.
All right. Good to hear.
Thank you, Mr. Rickenbacher. We're always finding that it's costing less money than we thought we did. So, that's a, that's a shout out. All right, uh, let's move on to public comment. Mr. Dodek, do you have any cards for this afternoon?
I do not.
Okay. Um, those of you in attendance, those of you on my left, your right, is there anyone who would like to make a comment? On my right, your left, is there anyone who wishes to make a comment? Okay. Then I guess we will move on to our next focus, which will be board member comments. Ms. Fisher.
I would like to request the indulgence of the board to allow me to keep my comments for the action meeting.
What are they about, I ask?
Yeah, I mean, what, what, what are you proposing to talk about that it's not on the agenda?
I'm proposing to talk about the board.
Okay. Well, I'm, I sort of feel as though every time we meet, we get a request to do something different than the protocol. And I really think what we need to do is to have a conversation about the protocol and see whether we're going to use it going forward because if we're going to make exceptions every meeting about who can say what when, given our protocol, then it's, then it's not protocol. And I, that, that concerns me.
I have a, 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 a bit of a tendency to kind of agree with that aspect with regard to, um, it puts all of us, one of the pieces that we have in place is, is to try to make sure that, um, no one on the board or on our offices are ever, it, it, it leaves the rest of us in an uncertainty of what's going to be discussed and is there going to be something that might make someone uncomfortable? And the briefing meeting time is actually a better time to have conversations for that. So, that's my, that's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Then I have no comments.
I just want to say that it was a pleasure working with the three of you and, and I wish you the best in your future endeavors and so I just wanted to say that I was proud to be a part of all three of you, Steve, Pam and Jane. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patricky.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Jane, I met you early on in my own campaign, um, and then when you decided to run, I was like, wowoo, that's awesome. Um, Pam, you and I got along right away on the campaign trail as well and you will be dearly missed. I consider you a friend and I appreciate working with you. And the shock of all shockers is that I have actually developed affection for Steve Toibert.
It can happen. It can happen.
He is a big teddy bear. Well, I don't know that he's a big teddy bear, but I have, I've also genuinely enjoyed working with you and I, I, it's a very bittersweet moment as I sit here because I do have to say goodbye to three treasured, um, colleagues, but I also have to commend our staff and our superintendent who just, you made history last night.
That's right.
You made history last night. And I know you're going to say, it's all about team, it's all about team, but it's all about you. Really, it's all about you. You are the leader of this organization and your employees got behind you and your community got behind you. We believe in you. And if that's not enough to give you the confidence you need to make this school district soar and to make the state of Florida the premier education state in the country, I don't know what it's going to take, but you made history last night and I am so proud to be part of this team. And there's not enough time for me to thank every individual that was involved, um, but this was truly a community push. We had massive, um, opposition from very powerful people in this county and they did what they could to tank this. But you put your head down and you plowed forward and you stayed true to the message and you were relentless in the pursuit of providing what our children need and I commend you for that and I'm, I'm proud to be part of this team. Thank you.
Mr. Toibert.
Thank you. And I, I echo with Ms. Patricky, I, I mean, I can't, I have to say that I was more elated last night than I was at any of the times where I was elected on my own personal election because we, uh, we won this for the community, we won this for the children, we won this for the district, um, and it's the right thing. We've always said it's the right thing and, and I, and I commend the entire team, uh, that did this. I mean, we have some rock stars that really did it and, you know, through Dr. Atkins' leadership that, um, we did what we needed to do for our community and we educated and we brought it forward and we still don't have 100% buy-in, but that's okay because we're not going to stop and this board won't stop and the new elected officials, I'm glad that you, you're here because it's, it's just begun. So, now you have to, you know, we had a lot of comments, it's like, well, we didn't really want to, but we did. Okay, well, we're going to show you that it was the right thing to do and, and this board, it's, some of us will be, you know, will leave, but we have good people coming on that we will continue what we're doing. And, um, I have to say, I came in 2002, I didn't have a clue what I was doing, um, and, and how I got involved in this, uh, coming from business, uh, when they said they needed somebody and, and really everybody, nobody was standing up but me and so I said, okay, I'll try it. And I had no idea the depth and breadth and complexity of the educational system and, and we did a lot of great things during my first two tenures from 2002 to 2010 and really did a lot to move public education forward in Lee County, but we didn't really fundamentally change public education. We just improved what we were doing, but it was the same, it was the same song, just sung better. And, uh, and I think, and I take, uh, great pride with the things we did, our comprehensive high schools and a lot of stuff we did, but when I came back in 2014, I really came back to, to see if we could fundamentally change public education. And, uh, and I have to admit, when I came, there was, you know, we had some really stark disagreements with people, but when, when the people that are still here, um, we all, you know, metal was on metal. And at the end of the day, the people that are here and now that we formed friendships and alliances, um, because we all believe in the same thing and we all formed a team that I think is the best that I've ever seen in Lee County in the history of Lee County that you see before us. And I think it's the best, I think it's the best in the state. You know, I've been, you know, we've all, we all see what's, what is going on in the other board, boards and there are some really good boards, but we compete with all of them. And our superintendent, if he's not the best, he's one of the best, not only in the state but in the nation. And our staff, he is only as good as the people that we have. And, and one of the things that, you know, I have some consternation, we lose, we lose people because we can't, because they find opportunities that we can't afford to keep them because in one breath, our, our public says we can't afford to pay our people, you know, they say we're paying them too much and yet we wait, other organizations, they, they, they cherry pick our people because we're not paying them enough. And so, you know, it's, and I won't get into all the details, but the, the point is, this job is not as easy as people think and you three will learn, it's a whole lot different sitting out there than when you're sitting here. And, uh, and I welcome you, but you, I, I, I challenge you because it is really, it's not as easy as it looks and, um, and it's very, very complex and, um, but I, but again, back to my staff, this staff has continued to get better, to get sharper, to get more proficient, to get more cohesive, to work better together collectively, to work better with, with the, with the board, to work with a superintendent that is by far the best I've ever seen.
Yes.
It's only started. And so, you know, I feel like I'm leaving like Michael Jordan leaving at the high game because, you know, we got the sales tax passed and, and everything's going great. And so, I turn it over to three, you know, very competent and to the board that I know is competent and, uh, and I wish you well.
Dr. Cuckle.
Well, I couldn't say it any better than you, as always, Steve, but it, it is, it is a big challenge and it is a big feat that that sales tax passed.
Yes, it is.
No one has been able to do that, including other groups very worthy and other groups very needy. And at one time, the hospital, they've all been turned down. And for the community, I don't think the community had any clue about what it would be like if it didn't pass. It became all about more taxes, but indeed, the issue was not more taxes, the issue was the quality of life for everybody.
Exactly.
Attracting other businesses here, the education of our students because the reality is we, you, you have to fix schools and we had to pull monies from other funds to be able to make sure that those were taken care of. You have to build schools or put trailers up or whatever we do. And now we have the funds to pay for growth. We'll ta, be able to take those trailers away and that's an image that people don't lose when they think about the quality of schools. And if we want what's best for our students as they graduate, and we've put so many things in place, I'm speaking, um, tomorrow to a group of people in my community all around my age and they wanted to know what are the updates with schools? And actually I thought, who's going to be interested in this until I started doing my research on the career academies. Unbelievable, our career academies, 33 different academies, many of which are replicated in each of our schools or many of our schools. The opportunities that kids have to leave high school making 30, 40, $50,000 a year. Um, and, and all of the other things that we've done that just kind of go unnoticed and we've just assimilated and taken for granted. So, um, over the two years, I've watched Dr. Atkins just orchestrate all of that. And of course, the big thing is the sales tax and the winner is the community. It's the school district, but bigger than that, it's the community. And admiring Dr. Atkins in the way, as you said, that he hires and nurtures and builds upon the strengths and if that isn't the good placement, the best placement, making those changes with dignity for everybody else. And the forward thinking, and I, I, I have followed that for a long time from the time Dr. Atkins was a principal when I came here into the personnel department and he would talk to us about always the, the, what's next in terms of teacher salaries, tenure, accountability and all of that. Whenever some new initiatives came to the state, he already had thought about that and was bringing it to the table and had some idea about how we would proceed. We were never behind the eight ball and we still aren't. So, for the new board members coming in, it's important, um, that you do your research early on and whatever it takes to do that, I know there were, uh, there were some questions out there, should we as a candidate support that sales tax? Well, before you sit in these seats, understand what the alternative would have been had we not passed that sales tax. You have a lot of good things going for you. You will all bring some new ideas. I'm delighted that you're going to be here, especially Betsy, you're going to be sitting in this seat. So, um, I'm eager for you to begin thinking about that and get going. And I'm eager for myself. You know, I am president of the Women's Golf Association. I'm Pelican's own, even though I can't golf. So, anyway, it, it has, it, I, I never thought I would come back after I left the first time and I'm so glad I did because I, we never had a team like we have now. And it's all about, you know, that, that, that saying, everyone achieves more when you're a team, at together you do. And, and that really is the first initiative to get to know each other, to get to know each other's strengths so that when you come to the tables, and it took a while when I came on to break down some of those previous, uh, instances and, and conflicts and things like that. So, now that you all have been through that, you have a better understanding of how to pull out in the very beginning, the differences, the strengths and the things so that you work as individuals and then as a group together. So, I will be watching, um, some of these anyway and watching the school continue to grow and all of you and I'm glad that you're here.
Ms. Morgan.
Yeah, so first of all, I just want to say thank you to Chris for her leadership on the advocacy. I think she has really worked hard to get us ready to, to launch, um, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of her work. I also sent an email out about the board reorganization workshop. Ms. Fisher, uh, this, that's the perfect place for you to bring up what you want to do about board member comment at, uh, the regular meetings because, uh, I've asked that the, the requests for changing protocols be into Denise by today, I guess, just so she can organize the meeting and we can move quickly.
Do you have that moderated?
No. Well, uh, Denise, Dr. Carlin.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a bunch of comments to make also. Okay, so I have a bunch of comments to make also. I want to say, I am incredibly grateful. I'm incredibly grateful to the citizens of Lee County who listened to learn, and to understand, and then engaged other people in the community in the process of learning about our initiative and why it was so critical. I am grateful to the PAC. The PAC encouraged us to move forward. They provided the resources to advocate for this initiative. We would not be where we are today, had it not been for people like Brian Rist, who stepped up and said, this community can do better. I am grateful to the district employees for understanding the urgency and necessity of solving this problem, so that we could turn our focus to the district's educational vision and mission, what we're really all here for, doing what we can to improve student achievement. I'm grateful to the superintendent and the cabinet, who worked countless hours to create the work plan, to provide the educational materials, to provide the information we needed to respond to the public in the education effort. You all have been doing double duty. I am incredibly grateful for your commitment. We asked a lot of you, and thank goodness, that work paid off. I am grateful to this board. Every member sitting at this table had the courage to tackle an unpopular initiative, understanding that it was critical to our ability to shift our focus to the district's purpose, to provide high-quality educational opportunities for students, present and future. And I am really grateful to serve on this team. We each brought different gifts. Once we had the opportunity to explore them, learn about them, and see how powerful they could be, this has, this has been an extraordinary time for me. So, thank you all for recreating what I consider to be the historical transformative moment of, was it 1866?
1887.
1887?
Seven.
By making this change, it's a lasting legacy that proves that Lee County is into high-quality public education, and that public education is the crown jewel of Lee County and growing this economy. So, there you go. Now, having said that, I do want to also say that I understand that there were people who said no, just because it was a tax. And I know that there's nothing we can do to change their minds. But I also respect those people who said no, because they believed that we had not done our job in earning their trust and confidence. And I can only say to them that this Oversight Committee has marching orders from the community. Those orders were written in the resolution, the plans are in the resolution. The Oversight Committee will ensure that this board does exactly what it promised to do with the tax dollars. Okay, so let's see, where do I start? I sat down with Ms. LaRiviere two and a half years ago, not knowing her at all. And after about a two and a half hour Starbucks break, I realized that she had the intelligence to be a great contributor to this board through the questions she asked, and the reflection she brought to our deliberations. Her compassion for everybody, I think elevated, made it possible for you to move beyond special interests, and to see the global, and to not always do what was necessarily in your best interest, or in the best interest of a particular population, but what was in the best interest of kids. And I really value your contribution, and I will miss you. But thank you very much for giving us the time you have. I think we should be indebted for your work. Jane Cuckle, my mentor, she's the one who put me here, and also has become, became, in her absence, a really good friend, and occasional golf partner. I don't think we'd be where we are today if you hadn't had the courage to step up and run for that two-year seat.
Yes.
You are also so team-focused, so focused on finding strength, so focused on building a team around those strengths. We are where we are today, because in part, your decision to come back. And I am incredibly grateful to you for that. So, thank you. Mr. Toyber?
[laughing]
Mr. Toyber and I shared a passion, but we didn't share a path initially. And we had to find a way to go together down that path. And I will really, really miss you. You have brought such an articulate voice to this community, particularly when it came to speaking about local governance, when it came to speaking about the budget and the financial obligations. You have been a great voice, and you will be missed, but I know you and Jane will be called upon to provide some mentoring to the new people who will be joining the board. And I hope you will feel free to call upon them and ask for their advice as you work forward in some of the deliberations you will be participating in. Thank you all. This is, what, what a wonderful time this has been. Thank you.
Well, I, I didn't know we were all going to go through and do all of that now. So, so I'm prepared to share some things that happened with, with kids, and without and about. And so I'm going to do that, and then I will, I will end with, on a, on a different note. Wanted to share with you, at our last CSI meeting, they came and wanted to make a, made a recommendation that you would fully consider at the reorganization, to please have the liaisons stay for two years, rather than just a one-year piece. They expressed frustration that I had just basically then come on in January, and then they knew that I would be, if we followed the plan, that I would not be at their November meeting. And so they said, this just doesn't make sense. And, and I concur with that. I know that there's a value in all of us having an opportunity to try to serve on those, but we all have the opportunity to attend the meetings, we all have the opportunity to listen to the reports and read the minutes. And so I believe that, so that's a recommendation. And I would just ask that, as you go into the reorg meeting, that that be part of conversation.
And that was CSI?
Yes.
That would be the committee you would expect that recommendation to come from?
Yes.
I support that, too.
Yeah, so I just would encourage you to move forward to that. And another one that I, it's great that we now assign people to do the, do the right thing for the Lee County Sheriff's Department on certain months. However, I have missed not being able to just come at all of them. So I'm going to say, just because you're not assigned, feel free to come. We just need to remind, maybe make a note to have Ms. Johnson say that it's on there, but it's a, you know, not, put it on our calendars as, as an optional piece for those of us who aren't assigned. The reason I say that is that the, our Do the Right Thing award ceremonies are just absolutely amazing. And I want to give kudos, especially to our principals, staff members, and parents in the East Zone, because they are constantly looking for our students, and the wonderful things that they are doing. And invariably, if you look at the, if you look at them, the majority of the students that are getting these awards are from the East Zone, which is really special, because they come from an area where many times, parents are working two jobs, they're dealing with poverty issues, and more language issues. And just to see the pride and the joy in the parents' hearts, it's a very good thing. But I want to share with you two students. I'll start with Sydney Prestea. He attends Harts Marsh Middle School. And he is, he is not one of our typical students, and is in the life skills class. It really, this time brought tears to eyes when you saw that he was one of the students recognized for saving a life. And in this case, it was his mother's life. Mom had gone earlier that day to the emergency room. They said, no, everything looked fine. Got home, and mom started acting strange. He made mom lay down. He called his dad, he called 911. He sat there, and he kept talking to his mom, would not let her go completely out. She was in the process of having a stroke. And the best thing about it is mom came and was there in her wheelchair. You know that she's rehabilitating, but an impact that this student did, and found the strength within himself to do that, was just very powerful to see. And Georgiana Omino, from Lee High Senior High School, took it upon herself, and her church and her family got involved, to pay for these cards to be given out to all of the students at Lee High Senior High School. Their desire is that these cards be put in the hands of all of our students in secondary level. The front cover says, Step One, You Matter. The other side would be Step Two. Here are the hotlines to call. If you are, if you are, they have the hotline for self-injury, hotline for suicide prevention, hotline for eating disorders, a grief and loss helpline, a drug abuse helpline, and the United Way Crisis Hotline. And they also see the need to put in the human trafficking contact information. And so, also provides just a piece that our students can put in their wallet, put it someplace, so they know that it's there. And what a powerful piece for this student to do. So hopefully, Dr. Atkins is aware of this. Ms. Brooks, I'm glad you're here. I am hoping it would be a wonderful thing to see a partnership, and giving credit to the student, and with the district, to make sure this gets into the hands of all of our secondary students. So that's a wish. And if not, then, and if we, you know, we will work, and maybe community people would assist us with that effort. Because you matter. And I think that is one thing that this governance team has learned over the last four years. And the main thing that they really needed to learn when I first came on, was the fact that each one of you, each one of us matters, and has value and input. Because when I first came on the previous team, there was a disconnect. I'm thankful that I started with five members instead of seven. It allowed for interest, a good transition. But as we move forward to seven, I will let those of you coming on board, a lot of kinks have been worked out, that I believe you will find it a smoother transition than those first coming on the board to begin that tenure. When I first came on the board, Mary said, welcome to the roller coaster ride. And it is indeed a roller coaster ride. There are times where, much like everything else in life, there are times where it's the up, and then there's times that it's the down. But if you think about the roller coaster ride, one of the most exciting things is to be taking that ride with your hands up in the air, as you're on your way up. And having it up when you're still up as you begin to go down. It's an important piece to have both of those aspects for the, there's a word for it, and it's a physics word, for the [pshoo] to still happen. But I don't design roller coasters, that's not my thing.
Is [pshoo] the physics?
I think it's, I think it works. I think it works this way. Because it helps with the momentum. It helps with the momentum. I believe that this board, this team deserves the Do the Right Thing Award, for each of you, for each of us, for each of our staff members. Because last night did show that we took a stand, and we did what was right, what was right. And there may be, very well may be a time, and it may be a right thing, where we may see taxation work differently than it has in the past. Maybe communities will start to determine how they want to do their own taxing for services. But we looked, and I, when I first came on the board, I was much like Ms. Patricia, when she was getting ready to come on the board. No, the sales tax thing, I didn't know if I could go for this. But when you really get rid of all of your agendas, and preconceived ideas, and do the research, and really look at it, it was the right thing, and it was the hard thing. And I respect, I too, just like Ms. Morgan, I respect those who, who had to vote no for conscience sake, and I get that. But I, I am hopeful that the incoming team will prove to our community, and those who voted no, that it is a good thing. I truly believe it is a good thing. And I was, you know, I was more excited about the sales tax going through than not being reelected. I have been upset about not being reelected. It was, it was a good thing, because I look back over the last four years, and one of the desires that I had was to see a board that could work and function together, and disagree, and constantly still stay in a moment of disagreement, but to have it to where there would still be a level of respect. And we have come a long way towards that. And I am thrilled. I'm thrilled that in the 50 years that I've been part of Lee County, I wish I could say it was from my day of birth, but I was 13 when I came, so you do the math. But in that time, I have never seen a stronger superintendent, a stronger board, than what has happened in the last two years. I have never seen district staff work as hard as they are. And I've noticed it. And I shout it out everywhere I go. Hey, every single person has feet of clay. There are going to be things that are just not quite right. That's okay, because that's the way we are. We're not perfect. But the heart motives, the desire to deny self, has truly become part of this system. And I hope that we continue to see that moving forward, because when you come on here, you do truly have to die to yourself. And my mantra has always been, from Micah, and I, I am so bad, I always remember where Bible verses come from, but I can never remember the chapter and verse, but I know the verse, which is the most important part. But in Micah, there's a mandate. He has shown you, oh man, what is good, what the Lord requires of you. Oh, I did not want to do this. But to do justice. And we have sought, and I have seen within this district, doing more justice than we have ever seen. Think about it. The, the MOA we have with the NAACP, MOU, I guess, memorandum of understanding, I did it, I finally corrected. I was here in 1968. I never would have thought we had gotten to that point. Look at where we are, where we have, we're now, EDAC not just looks at color of skin and culture, but we're looking at differences of our students and our families who are not the typical, that it includes all of the variances in the way students learn and grow. We are now at a point where, look, when, Mr. Toyber, when you and I came on, that deep, that different, those students in different schools with differentiated accountability, how high it was. And now we're down to one that really is only three points away from getting out of it.
Absolutely.
We have moved milestones. And most of those schools that have benefited have been the schools in the area where I live.
That's true.
There is no perfect scenario. We We are not able to see into the future. You know, had we been able to see in the future and where growth was going to be, maybe we would have made a little bit of a difference in selecting which school to build when. But we don't have that gift. We go with the data we have at that time, and our job is to look at every single side of the issue to see what is the best use of how we're going to serve all of our students. And I am thankful we have a high school there that serves our migrant population in Bonita Springs High School. The majority of the students, I would say, venture to say, almost all of those students are the ones who would qualify for free and reduced lunch. It's not quite filled, but next year it's going to be filled a whole lot more. It's going to happen fast, and I'm excited to see what happens. I'm excited to see what happens with Triple M and Double M. I've had to explain to people what these letters, how these letters go, and I don't know what the next elementary school will be. I think we're past 26 schools, so we may be on to A1. At any rate, but amazing, remarkable things have happened in the last four years, and I attribute a lot of that to our guidance of our superintendent, who puts service above I give credence to all of our staff members who have taken on that mantra and the hearts. So, with all that being said, now I don't have to do that tonight, so I guess this is better, this is safer. I don't know what the future holds, none of us do, but I know who holds the future. And one good thing did happen last night. I called Britt, my daughter's Britt, and she lives on the other coast and is 32, and has found Mr. Wright, and he said he was going to go ahead and put the ring on. He told my husband that, but it needs to happen. So, I called, and I said, "It looks confirmed I will not be serving as board member." I said, "So, it's time for the two of you to get married and make some grandbabies." And she said, "Well, you know, we were just talking about that and about the fact that mom's now free. She can help us out when we need to." So, we don't know what the future holds, but it's wonderful, it's exciting, and life is always an adventure. And I know that my walk with my Lord each day is a new adventure. So, best to all of you. And I'm not finished yet, I know. Okay. Now, now, we're going to go to Board Attorney and Superintendent Comments. Mr. Doting.
Yeah, I really don't know how to follow that. Unfortunately, I have to talk some business with all of you, a couple of items. First of all, I sent you a note this morning. I am asking for your blessing, if you will, to ask the Attorney General for an opinion regarding meetings of the school board and firearms, and I hope I have your consent to do that. I will tell you, though, beforehand, that the AG has only issued six opinions this year and eight last year, so we may not get one, but I think it's the right way to go so I can advise you all on policy following that request. Thank you. Second, the application to serve, as you know, on the Sales Surtax Oversight Committee is out there, and we have already gotten 18 responses. And I was asked by the very capable folks in the board office how long we're putting the application out there for, which is something we've never discussed. And I will just tell you that the board policy requires these individuals to be chosen and approved by this board at the December meeting. So, we, and I'm seeing how you feel, we have decided November 30th would be a date to end applications, and then we'll be able to get all of you the names, so you can choose the individuals and Dr. Atkins, because the superintendent on this committee has a couple of people to pick, get you the information, so we can get the names on a board agenda for the meeting in December, if that sounds okay. That's what we will do. Okay?
Okay.
Finally, I will be very brief. To the three outgoing board members, I appreciate the chance to have been your board attorney for a very short period of time. However, I was the staff attorney, and in fact, two of you were here when I came here back in 2005. And Ms. LaRiviere, I've known you for the last four years, and it's been nothing but a pleasure to serve you as the staff attorney and now as the board attorney, and I wish you all the best. Thank you. That's all I have.
Dr. Atkins.
I will also be very brief, because many of you were very eloquent and articulate in your words and expressed many of the feelings that I have as it relates to not only the referendum, but also being able to be a part of this pretty incredible governance team. You've heard me say, you know, many times, but I need to say it one last time, and that is, you know, I've been a part of this district for a long time now. I mean, since I'm in my 31st year, and I've been pretty close to a number of boards since coming down to the district office, and I really feel it was truly an honor to serve with this team. This team has incredible courage. It has incredible passion and commitment to children in Lee County, and as a result, we were able to do some amazing things together. Many of these things that we've talked about today would not have been possible without the support, the commitment, and the hard work of this literally Super Bowl team to steal a Chris Patrica-ism. So, it is, I just have to say, it's been an honor. To the three outgoing, you know, many of us have actually linked the histories together. I remember Mr., first time seeing Mr. Toyber, this big guy in like a t-shirt and shorts with a campaign sign. I'm like, "Who is this guy?" I mean, he's huge. But he brought incredible energy to our district, and it has been great serving along with you. And Dr. Cuckel, you know, we go way, way back, as she mentioned, but I am incredibly happy that she agreed to come back and serve, and that is about someone who truly is committed to education and wanted to make sure this district was headed in the right direction, and we could not have done the things we've done without you, your return. And Ms. LaRiviere, it has been an absolute pleasure. Your passion, your commitment, your dedication to children is absolutely commendable, and you are one of those people that have always been able to pick me up and have a few kind words to bring, uplift me during some of the more challenging times. So, that, I would say I would be missing that, but one of the cool things about all of you that I know is that in my discussions with the three of you, that you're not done yet. You know, you're not done serving your community and serving the school district. So, you know, I feel like we're getting three new team members to join this already incredible team. So, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes next for you all, but I just want to thank you for your service. Lastly, I just want to welcome our three new board members, and I was able to contact a couple of them last night, reached out to all three of them, and I hope, Ms. Vaughn, you've got my message. If not, we're going to check that phone number. But the other two, I mean, they are excited to get to work, and, you know, so that was, and excited about joining this team, so I really love the enthusiasm, and so I'm looking forward to our new team as well. So, that's it for my comments. Others, one last thing, I want to recognize Jared Eady and also Mr. Carl Burnside at Omega Psi Phi fraternity. Mr. Eady received the Perseverance Award, and also Mr. Burnside received the scholarship recognition, so just wanted to mention that. I will do something, I think, out on communication to make sure that comes out, and that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we have no code of the order, and we adjourn. We'll see you all back here at 5:45, student performance, correct?
Yes.